It's like a wedding, only one side.
All right, all right. Good evening, everybody. I call this planning commission meeting to order. The time is now six thirty-four. If everyone will please rise and repeat with me the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman?
Present.
Um, Commissioner Goth?
Present.
Uh, Vice Chair Mohammed?
Present.
Uh, Chair Malari is absent. Youth Commissioner DeAndre?
Present.
And Chair Cruz.
I am present. Okay, this time we'll move on to public comment. This time is reserved for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments three minutes each, and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting, or to verbally comment on an item during the meeting, click Raise Your Hand button if joining by computer, or press star number nine if joining by phone. When the item is called, the planning commission is prohibited by law from taking any actions on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the planning commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name, and any handouts for distribution to the planning commission must be emailed by 3:00 PM on the meeting day. At this time, I'd like to open public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Garcia. I'm not here as an air official. I'm here as a member of the public. Also, I'm a registered member of the...
Parking rec. American Canyon Union Parks Foundation. Do you need that over again so you can get it better recorded? You got it? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Yvonne Beginsky, and I've been here before on several items. Um, I just am back today because I spoke on the Paoli Watson Project a few weeks ago, and something came up that I wanted to share with you. Um, two weeks ago, a bear showed up at Silverado Country Club, and it caused a big brouhaha because the bear was caught on a Ring camera walking across somebody's driveway at eleven-thirty at night. Nobody saw the bear except for the camera. Nobody came across it. The bear didn't do anything but walk across the driveway. Well, you would have thought all hell would have broken loose. A bear in Silverado, people went nuts. They were talking about calling in California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They were worried about their garbage cans. They were worried about their children being eaten, and they were worried that cats and dogs were going to disappear. They didn't know that if they called the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, that that bear would be killed as a nuisance. They didn't realize that when they call for any kind of trapping or any kind of removal of any animal, that means the death of that animal. Fast forward, I'm walking across a creek, and I see salmon going up Salvador Creek. Giant salmon, this big. I am in shock. I had no idea we had such large salmon going through a creek this deep. Well, there were children watching those salmon and stabbing them with sticks and throwing rocks at them, and I thought, as many of us would think, that those salmon were spawning. What's happening is those salmon were in a death knell, not from trying to spawn, but trying to find a place to spawn, because that creek is blocked off at Highway twenty-nine into pipes, so there is no place for them to go. And one of those salmon was a Chinook salmon, and I took a picture of it. And what I'm saying and what I'm trying to point out to you is wildlife and people do not mix. They just don't. People are terrified of wildlife. They're, they don't know what, how, you know, what, what the wildlife is doing. I, I'm not a wildlife biologist. I didn't know that these salmon were literally trapped in this creek. The reason I'm bringing this up is I really think it's important that we look at our development as a bioregion, and we look at this entire area and determine how are we going to conserve wildlife areas, because as we continue to develop land, we are pushing them further and further and further out, and there's going to be no place for them to go. I read those EIRs. I read those reports, and they're all saying, "Oh, we don't have to worry about this Swainson Hawk. It can go fly over here and forage." And I'm saying, "There's nothing left there. That's being developed as well." So I would like to ask the planning commission to take a closer look at this, at their process of developing as, in a bioregion, and, and look at Napa County. What's going on within South Napa County? What's going on with American Canyon? And I really appreciate the time listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beginsky, in sharing that experience with us and that information. Are there any others for public comment?
Do we have anyone on Zoom that has comment on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Please raise your hand if you would like to speak. We have no additional public comment.
At this time, I close public comment. Okay, moving on to agenda changes. Director Cooper, are there any agenda changes?
Chair Cruz, we have no agenda changes tonight.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Moving on to the minutes of December twenty-first. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the minutes of December twenty-first? And if so, I'm looking for a recommendation.
I recommend that we approve the minutes of December twenty-first, 2023.
I'll second that.
There's a first and there's a second. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Goth?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mohammed?
Aye.
Chair Cruz?
Aye.
And Commissioner Malari is absent.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. The first item of agenda on a public hearing is the Napa River Ecology Center Design Permit.
Chair Cruz, before we get going on this matter, I would like to recuse myself under the common law bias.
Thank you, Commissioner Goth. Is there anybody else I would like to recuse themselves? We'll give Commissioner Goth a second to step out. Mr. He.
All right. Good evening, Chair Cruz, members of the planning commission, and members of the public. I'm very happy to be here today to give a brief introduction to the Napa River Ecology Center Design Permit Project. So, um, the project is a redevelopment project proposed at the city courtyard at two oh five Wetlands Edge, and the project is led by the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation with their executive director, Janelle Selick. Uh, the gist of the project is the conversion of an existing five thousand square foot two-story building and the surrounding two-and-a-half acre site into a new ecology center with multipurpose areas for people of all ages. And when Janelle's team shared with me their presentation a few weeks ago, I reviewed it, and I found that it was done with, um, uh, just a very thorough job and comprehensive. So I don't want to give a presentation of my own that's redundant to theirs, so without further ado, I want to introduce Janelle Selick and her team.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. Third time's a charm, and we're thrilled to be here in council chambers. I'm excited to introduce some members of our team with us tonight. First of all, I'm Janelle Selick, Executive Director of the Foundation. Uh, we have with us tonight our Board President, Rafi Balloy, and several board members and staff, as well as members of our project team. We have Michelle and Naveen with RIM Architects, and we have Jeremy with RSA Plus, our civil engineer here tonight. So, um, any questions that arise, we're all happy to jump in and, and answer them. So, I'll go ahead and get started. So just a little overview. One of the things right off the bat that I think makes this project especially exciting is that this is a project really envisioned by our community for our community. And the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Uh, we're a very grassroots organization, started about eight years ago by an all-volunteer group that really wanted to jump in and build the community that they wanted to raise their families in. So since then, we've grown very quickly and been able to add staff and run year-round programs. And it was really through the development of those environmental programs that we saw the need for a center like this. So, um, thanks to some of our fundraising efforts, we were able to hire a project team, work with the city to identify a site, and really jump in on this. So, I'm excited again to be here and share our work. A little bit about the project history, and I think really the most important piece of this slide is that this is a project that's been in discussion and thought about for a couple of years now. Really, during COVID is when we started to think about, "Well, wouldn't it be amazing if we had a site where we could actually bring community and students together to learn about our wetlands?" As we were doing environmental education work and bringing students from the schools out to the wetlands to learn, we realized there's a tremendous opportunity. In fact, I like to say some of the best opportunity in the county for hands-on learning. And part of that is because of the, um, the awareness that our, our previous city leadership had and electeds had in developing the wetlands. So thanks to the site, we have over ten miles of trails, very pristine wetlands environment, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and it's really a perfect place for learning. The biggest challenge is there's no infrastructure out there. Um, there's no permanent facilities, and so that can be a challenge, especially with weather. And in order to grow, we really need to, um, we need a, a permanent location to be able to hold programs year-round. In addition to that, we've had inquiries from other organizations, as well as schools in a variety of counties around us that are interested in coming here to learn. So I think everyone's aware of what an incredible asset the wetlands are, but it's nice to know too that surrounding communities really see that and recognize that as well. So thanks to partnerships with the city and some discussion, we were able to not only identify a site, but negotiate a term sheet, which I think is going to council next month. Uh, so identify the site, negotiate the term sheet, and the long-term lease. Um, we were able to hire our wonderful project team and develop conceptual plans, able to submit the project application to the city, and we were thrilled to be awarded some funding from the Coastal Conservancy to support our community outreach efforts. Um, that came through, um, in partnership with the city as well. A little bit about our community outreach efforts. Um, we've been very aware from the beginning that this site is really precious, and we have a lot of ideas about what could be done with it, but we know that that's really, um, the community has a lot to say about it, and we want to know what the community would like to see in a site like that. So what we did in the beginning is really jumped in and engaged the community. Um, in fact, I think in your packet, there's an overview of our outreach efforts, which, um, fast forward to now, we've reached over five hundred people through one-on-one meetings, tours of the site, presentations to different groups. And we've tried to be very thoughtful about engaging groups that are sometimes traditionally hard to reach. Um, all different kinds of socioeconomic groups as well, student groups, community groups, elected leaders, you name it. We've, we've talked with you, probably chatted with all of you, and, or had lunch with all of you at one point or another here. So we've been, um, the point is we've taken a lot of input into the project design. Um, one of the things that we realized as we were gathering this input was, you know, we thought, "Okay, this is a perfect site for environmental education." We knew that was going to, that was in kind of a no-brainer. Um, community gathering space, much needed here. We know that's a no-brainer as well. What we hadn't heard a lot about, but we were getting feedback on, was this idea of environmental art. And so we heard repeatedly in our community outreach efforts that there's a desire in the community for people to be able to connect with nature in a very creative way. And so we actually incorporated into the plan this idea of an environmental artist workshop or maker space into the plan, which is a modular building that will be able to really allow people to come, um, do, do environmental sculpture or repurposed art programs, potential partnership with Recology to come in and bring some programs. So a lot of really interesting things, and it's a, it's a thoughtful item that I think really sets it aside from other traditional environmental education areas. Um, we'll talk just a little bit about the vision, and it's really just about connecting community together and connecting community with the environment. So it's envisioned to be a region-serving facility, so not just folks from American Canyon, but Napa County and throughout the region. Um, it's really a hub for environmental education and learning. We like to think it will propel American Canyon forward as an environmental leader and really work on providing equitable access to nature, art, and science programs. And we work with a variety of partners in our programs year-round. Um, many listed here. There's even more probably not, but the City of American Canyon, of course, is a strong partner with this, and I really have to give a shout-out to Director Cooper and William and City Manager and department heads that have supported this project along. Um, this is, this is truly, I think, a perfect, um, very, um, very proactive public-private partnership effort, and so we're really grateful for that. And, and we're grateful for the opportunity to be the organization to repurpose this site, because it really is, um, as I've heard before, million-dollar views, and to have something right on wetlands is pretty special. So we do work with a variety of these partners for our programs, and, and some of them have expressed interest in having a permanent spot at the Ecology Center as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Naveen, who's going to step in on some of our design goals.
Thank you, Janelle. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, everybody. My name is Naveen Mathur from RIM Architects, a San Francisco-based architectural company. When Janelle first hired us, um, we, uh, really had all the design goals already made, which is unusual for us, because most of the times when we start working with a client, we have to sort of babysit the client just to figure out what they really want. But in this case, the design goals were pretty well-defined. Um, the big, the biggest goal of them was the sustainable and eco-friendly design, and the best way to be eco-friendly is to reuse existing facilities to the extent possible. And that's what you'll see in our designs today, that the site elements are reused. The building is reused. We're keeping the existing driveway where it is, not to impact the traffic patterns adversely and things of that nature. Uh, night sky pollution was another big design goal. Um, so we are trying to mitigate that by site lighting and other aspects in the design that'll keep the, the night sky pollution to the minimum. Uh, parking, screening, incorporating views, and supporting wildlife, uh, wetlands restoration, all these are part of our, our design goals. Location, um, like William said, two oh five Wetlands Road. It's right by the wetlands, um, in American Canyon. I'll go through these real quick here. Just a Google view of the site. That shows the existing building, some of the existing, uh, utility features that will be removed by the city. The only thing I would like to point out is there's a pump house building right behind the existing building that will continue to operate, and you'll see how we have made that as part of our design. Just some existing photos for reference. Site plan, so, um, starting from the existing driveway, our goal was to keep the existing driveway and not disrupt the existing intersection there. Uh, so we're creating a new meandering pathway that leads up to the building. Um, and if you notice, we are not providing parking in front of the building. We are providing it to the site. Wanted to keep the front as an activity space, outdoor activity space, so that from the street, you're not just seeing a bunch of cars in a building. Uh, in the rear, like Janelle was saying, we have the maker space, modular structure that forms the rear courtyard to the building. The existing pump house building remains, and the floor plans will show that we are creating an observation deck on top of the existing pump house building. Because the city will also be using the pump house building, we are creating access for the city, uh, personnel to, to access and maintain the pump house building. The overflow parking is shown there for reference. It will not be developed with, uh, with this project, but will be a future overflow parking, which is really there to support the future kayak launch that I believe will be on, on that side. Uh, activity in the front, mostly, uh, outdoor classrooms. Uh, in, in the rear, we have, uh, where the berm is, a meandering pathway. And then, as you'll see from the next slide, we have a lot of sustainable design or green elements, and, and we will show that, uh, next slide. I was wondering if you wanted to add something, Janelle, to the site plan?
Well, I think a couple of things to add. Um, safety and security are always number one for us, and so there are elements in the site plan, um, that are fenced. So, um, children, if they're at the site for an education program, won't be able to run out into the street. Um, at the same time, so we, we're trying, our, our goal with fencing is to preserve the view shed and, and create an aesthetically pleasing environment while also providing a protective, um, protective atmosphere for all of our users and, and visitors. So, um, so the site, it's a little bit hard to tell from the site plan, but the site is fenced and cross-fenced. Um, we also have a nice, accessible, a, a new access to wetlands paths. Um, that's one of the things that, that we know our community holds dear, and that's, anyone who's been along Wetlands Edge any evening of any day knows, you know, there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of people that walk that path every day. And so we do have new wetlands paths that will open as part of this project, and they'll go around the perimeter of the site. You can see in the plan there. Um, so we're really proud that the project provides new public access while also providing environmental benefits.
Thank you. I may have ignored to, to mention that we are creating a file-aid access, uh, from, from the rear, which actually leads into a nice open space which can be used as a flex space, farmer's market or, or other activities. This is a site plan that is pointing out all the sustainable design elements, uh, all, all the green elements. Uh, we have a rainwater capture system from the roof that will also act as an educational element for, for the classes. Uh, the, the recycle water facility that's existing will be relocated where the, uh, overflow parking is. We are creating a wetland demo area in the front with, with a meandering pathway and a bridge, just to create more educational interest on the site. Uh, we have a pavilion with PV panels on top to support its own power needs. Uh, we have environmental sculptures in the back. Uh, so a lot of focus to, to a sustainable design and, and its education to the community. Just a quick view of the floor plan. Like I mentioned, our goal has been to reuse the existing building. So, uh, we are obviously keeping the footprint of the building and, and creating, uh, these four glazed, uh, roll-up doors in the front. And the idea is that during the nice weather, they can be rolled up, and the inside and outside can all become an activity area. The inside of the floor plan is largely open, just to create a nice activity area with storage in the back, a nice big storage room for other bulky items. In the front, there's a reception desk and, and a donor wall at the back. And if you notice, we are, uh, adding a elevator for, for public access up to the second floor, which ultimately takes them to the observation deck, as you'll see in the next slide. Uh, adding the entry canopy just to make the entry identifiable. Uh, we are adding means of egress door, just to keep to the life safety codes. We are repurposing the existing metal stairs on, on either side by, by building a green wall in front of one of them. So just a clean, simple floor plan with all-gender restrooms, uh, serving the, uh, the population. On the second floor is largely, uh, offices, office spaces. Uh, I believe there will be the Foundation's offices. We are creating a multipurpose, uh, conference room slash event space with a little kitchen bar. Uh, again, accessible by the elevator from the first level. There's all-gender restroom. And then, uh, if you notice, from the second level, there is a connection that will take you to an outdoor deck, which actually is sitting on top of the pump building. So because that building was there, and it was functioning, and the city needed to use it, our goal was to repurpose it, really. So, so we'll have to study the structural aspects and, and have a outdoor deck sitting on top, which is where all your wetland views are. Uh, we also have the, the outdoor deck accessible from the outside stair. So if somebody is not, is just going to the outdoor deck, maybe after hours, uh, they don't have to go inside the building. They can directly access the outdoor deck.
Uh, I think there's a lot that's exciting about the project to me, of course, but I think one of the really amazing things is the idea of, um, taking a, a piece of the site that needs to stay, because it's a necessary, um, city facility, that's the pump house, and, and turning into something that benefits the community. Um, and so I want to give Fran a shout-out, because Fran was one of the first people who said, when we're talking about this, "Well, you should have a deck off the back to take in the views." So, so we put a deck in, Fran. And, uh, but it's not, it's not just, it's not just about the views. Um, as you guys all know, we're, um, you know, climate is changing. Sea level rise is, is an issue. Um, we're addressing sea level rise through, um, civil engineering in the plan. Um, but one of the really cool things that DECK does is it provides an amazing opportunity for citizen science related to flooding, wetlands tides, sea level rise, and climate change. And so, you know, there's so many opportunities for, for community members to get involved, and so we envision being able to do things like, um, have community record tidal action through the deck, through view sheds on the deck, and some of that can be translated then into citizen science projects that contribute to the broader community scientific knowledge. And when you have a space like that, that you can get up there and you can set up your view scopes, um, and you can record those things, you're actually contributing to understanding climate change and, and watershed movement. And so I think that's really special. Um, one of the things that we love about this project is, is it allows, um, we want to empower the community to feel like they're able to do something about climate, environment, all those things that can feel a little scary. And so the more that we can empower folks through this, um, the more successful it is, and I think the better we'll all, we will all be in the long run. So, um, so I'm pretty excited about the deck.
Well said, Janelle. Rest of the slides are really, are, you know, artist renderings of the project. Um, I can, I can describe some from here. As you can see from, at the building, we're, we're adding the front entry canopy, which really changes the look of the building for, from being a two-story masonry utility-looking building to something that's more inviting. Uh, we have signage on, on the front. We are using sustainable material to, to clad the building on the exterior just to, you know, give it a feel for, for an eco-center. Uh, and then rest of the view here, it shows the front activity... And then rest of the view here shows the front activity area, the pine cone on the side, the pavilion with PV panels on top, walkways and teaching gardens and learning areas, and you can see parking in the back. This is a back view from the side of the wetlands, just to show the existing berm and how the meandering pathways will create this interesting landscape zone. And also shows the outdoor deck that Janelle mentioned that's sitting on the pump house and all the rear activity area, including the Makerspace modular structure. We will continue to keep the access that goes around the side to the public, hence the security fencing that Janelle mentioned will keep that functional. Some more views of the front, bird's eye view, showing the front activity, the building, and also the rear and the wetlands back there. This is a good view of the overall picture of the project. Just some more renderings to show the front, street view, a little pine cone structure and the front activity and the landscape areas will create interest on the street. That entry canopy I mentioned, repurposing the existing metal stair, a little attempt to put a green wall in the front. There'll be rainwater capture exhibit in the front. So really an attempt to take existing and repurpose for the eco center use. Just some more views of the front. That drum there is our way of showing the rainwater capture, by the way. Front view, showing the signage and we're repainting the front of the facade. Just some inside views, as you enter through the canopy, you can see the reception desk at the entry, those three large roll-up doors that I mentioned, that could be rolled up to create this nice outdoor indoor space. Behind the reception desk, idea was to put a donor wall where we can display names of the donors, more clearly shown here in that back wall. And again, a nice activity area with large fans circulating the air to keep it nice and airy. Well, Janelle, you can take the next steps. Michelle, anything you wanted to add?
So next steps, after this evening, we'll be finalizing the term sheet, transitioning it to a lease and that'll go to council. I think it's scheduled for February right now. We have tentative agreements with the city to be able to move in, staff to be able to move in and occupy the site and utilize the office space when the city moves out. I know they're actively moving out their operations to the old Napa Junction School and New Community, City Community Center. We're, funding is an ongoing process and, you know, we're really jumping into this with kind of a well-rounded and robust funding strategy. So we're actively working on grant applications, corporate sponsorships, as well as private fundraising. Then after that, we're, actually, at the same time of that, we're getting into our design development phase, which is where we really take this conceptual drawings and prepare, begin to prepare what would be future construction documents for a contractor, construction bids and documents, and then would be submitting for permits. So a little bit about the next steps and we envision those to be over the next 12 to 18 months.
So the only thing I'll add is that it is, we are planning this project as a single-phase project, but that is highly dependent on funding. So we have also prepared a phasing plan in case we need to break this up into multiple phases to accrue more funding. So we've kind of, we're planning for both contingencies, but hopefully do it in one fell swoop. So that's the other important thing I wanted to add.
That actually concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Plan commissioners, what are your questions for the applicant and/or staff?
So, thank you. Super excited that this project is going to be coming up and you guys did a great job, Janelle, team. It looks beautiful. My question is, the hours are seven days a week, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. General program hours, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. How is staffing looking like? And I'm just excited for job opportunities in our community.
That's a great question. You know, we're, the way we're approaching this right now is we're actually growing as a foundation through the development of this. So we're adding staff. We actually, we're just interviewing this week, we'll be adding a naturalist position. So right now, we're adding staff in anticipation that we'll be able to transition these programs into the home. So what we're trying not to do is move in and then have to add a bunch of extra operational costs by adding, you know, several new full-time staff. So we envision that on a day-to-day basis, our five staff will be there. Not all of our staff are full-time. In fact, I'm the only full-time staff. So it may be four to five, depending on what programs are there for the day. So it's a little bit about how the staffing will work.
Two more questions real quick. What does the pine cone symbolize?
Oh, that's a great question. The pine cone is, the pine cone is actually a modular educational piece. So it's a company out of San Francisco that sells them. They're about, I believe they were about 30 feet wide at the base. So it's a pretty good-sized structure and it's actually an educational, like a one-piece educational facility. So kids can go inside and the idea is that they can go inside, circle up, do educational programs, work with their teacher or staff on something. And so it's just a design for an educational amenity that happens to look like a pine cone. So.
It looks super cool.
It is cool. One of the other really neat things about it is the kids can actually climb on the outside of it and it has a hole in the top. So I think technically you could even have like little fire pits or something in there. But yeah, it is really neat. It's very unique.
Nice, okay. And then the other, my last question is the access to the rooftop from the outside, it didn't look like it would be closed off. So can the public go up there, like on a nice night to?
Great question. So yeah, if we have a program operating, yes. But the entire site, including access to the deck, will be, will only be open while we're there running programs. So we envision programs seven days a week, but you know, in the evenings, it's closed up. It's not like anyone can just come and, you know, go up on the deck during those hours.
Thank you and thank you all for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Any other? Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. I've got a bunch of questions from, that's normal, right? Everybody knows I've been doing this a while. But from some really mundane things to, I think, some more critical items. I'll start with the really mundane. Just looking at the picture of the restrooms. I understand they're going to be all gender, but especially if you've got kids, I think it is critical that they have urinals as well as a toilet. Otherwise, the cleanup and mess that you are going to have is going to be really bad. So I would highly recommend that you do that and consider that. And frankly, as an adult male, I'll tell you, even if you put them at child height, you know, a man will use it at child height rather than having to sit down. So that was my very, very mundane. Next, the, I noticed the commentary about the pavilion having PV panels, but there was no comment about the parking area. Now, the parking area is a heck of a lot more space and would create a whole lot more green energy generation and so on. Well, yes, it will be a little more cost-wise upfront to have the panels installed. I think the long-term benefit on the payoff would really be valuable and could, in fact, help be a methodology for funding on the project. So again, I would suggest that a lot of consideration be given to covering all of the parking. And I'm talking about the existing parking, not the overflow, although when the overflow is going to happen, I would strongly encourage PV on the overflow as well, because not only is it the energy generation, but it also simply provides shade for people who are parking. So instead of getting into a car that in the summertime can be 120, 140 degrees, you're going to get into a car that's going to be the ambient temperature of the air around you, basically. So there's a lot of benefits to doing that. My next question or comment regarding parking was, and this may be, you know, it's still relatively early, but was any thought given to changing the orientation of the parking? So you've got it, at this point, I guess you would call it perpendicular to the building? Have you thought about making it parallel to the building? Which would be just rotating. I don't know if it would add or decrease spaces, but again, it's something that I think overall should be explored because you may find that just that tilt is going to, you know, add parking spaces potentially. Now, the, one of the fun things, you know, you guys talked about the deck and using it for observations. Any thought of putting a permanent telescope installation on the deck? Can you, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, definitely. You know, it would be an amazing asset and I think we could work that into the design. You know, right now, it's very simple, you know, protected half-wall, but if we can design in our next phase, an area for a permanent telescope and a really good one, so that we can take advantage of some of those science opportunities, absolutely. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, you guys right now do the smores and meteors and wouldn't it be pretty frickin' awesome to be able to, you know, do it where not only, you know, you're using good locations that are better for, you know, dark sky presently, but I mean, if you're successful in keeping the, you know, sky in that area by the eco center dark, that just, you know, anybody who's ever stargazed, the difference between doing it in a urban or suburban environment and doing it when you're out with no lights, the sky is, it's just amazing when you look at it. So the closer we can get to that, the better.
Yeah, definitely. And I have to give Stacy Johnson from Parks and Rec a shout out because I think Stacy puts on smores and meteors, but we would, we would love to be able to partner with them on that or expand it or in any way, because it's an excellent opportunity. Great question.
Yeah. And then the next, because it gets into my personal career and so on. Project development takes generally two approaches. It appears, and I don't know how far along on the process you guys are, but just hearing the comments, that you're using one approach, which unfortunately is the more traditional, but usually the more costly approach, which is what in the building world is called design bid build versus doing a design-build project where the designer and the builder are paired up from the get-go and you then don't have to go to bid through the bid stage. It usually leads to efficiencies, less problems in terms of disputes, change orders on the project, extras being added, because there's much more synergy between the parties instead of you have a design, you put the design out, contractors bid on that design, and then they kind of look at it and, again, I bond contractors who do public works. I've been doing it for nearly 40 years. So reality is contractors will bid even if they know the plans are pitiful and that they're bad and that they're wrong and changes are needed. Because they look at it and then they'll go, "Okay, I got to bid it the way it's put out there and then we're going to go and we're going to make all these changes. And on these changes, we're going to be able to," especially if some of them are going to happen not right up front, but a little bit later on, once you're already kind of into the project, it's like, "Okay, now we need a change order. I can get some extra profit on this." So it's just one thing and I see this far too often with organizations who don't know enough and don't have anybody with a background in construction involved. So I don't know if it's too late to kind of rethink where you guys are at, but I did want to make note of this and point it out. And then tied in with it, I'm assuming, and I may be incorrect here, but that assuming this is going to go in the traditional design bid-build approach, I would strongly encourage that when you get to the bid phase, you require that the contractor, the general contractor that you hire be bonded, because it provides a guarantee that the project will be performed. Doesn't guarantee completion, but it guarantees that the contract will be performed. So as long as you, and we can talk offline about this, but as well, but it's important and the nominal additional cost figure about 1% to protect the project and to protect the funds that you're raising is usually well worth the expenditure. So that's, that's what I got.
Great. I'll jump in real quick. We, so we are, we did hire a project management firm, so they act as our owner's agent. And so they've been really good about negotiating all of our contracts. And so it's definitely something, pass this along to them as well as if you ever want to meet and greet or chat with them a little bit and share some of this, they'd probably be very interested in hearing it. But there, we recognized very quickly that, you know, this is not, we're not developers, we're not, this is not our expertise at all. So we tried to bring in really the best groups, consultant groups to support us. And one of them is our project management team, Pound Project Management, and they're very experienced and well-known throughout the valley and the region. So I'll definitely pass that along and I don't know, Rafi, you have any, anything else to add to that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the project overall. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm excited for it and I can't wait to see where it goes and what can, what can be developed.
Thank you, Commissioner Almond. Andre?
Here we go. So I just have two questions and the second one builds off of the first one. And the first one is, what exactly will be done differently for the low-impact lighting as I can see here in the design goals?
Well, first of all, all the exterior lighting will have what is called as light shields. So we'll select fixtures where the lights are only going down and not going up. That'll be one. From a landscape design point of view, all our lighting will be low in its elevation and will be placed so that there are landscape elements around it. So a lot of light is not escaping the site. And then, you know, once we get more into the design and we have the consultants all coming with their expertise, we'll have other night sky pollution mitigation measures in the project.
Okay, thank you. That kind of answers my second question too, because what it was going to build off of was specifically the fish that go through that area, because in the wetlands, we have a lot of striped bass that come through specifically between February and October and they stop coming around like November and December. And they don't care too much about the sound, but it's the light that really impacts them. And one of the things that I've noticed, like all you have to do is shine a flashlight into the water and dozens of them will just go right where the light comes. So that was kind of my question, because I don't want all the fish to go to one area because they see the light coming off of the building. So, and it is really important to the area too, because if we get an overpopulation of like herring, for example, that go through the area, which are the food that the striped bass eat, it'll ruin a lot of like the insects that feed in the water as well too. So that kind of answers both of my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, having said that, we still have to maintain a core required lighting for safety purposes, which will really be our goal.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I was listening to Derek's.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I was listening to Derek's presentation from Recology at the city council meeting and he was talking about how Recology is going to be involved with the education. So I'm excited to learn about the different programs that you guys are going to be coming up with.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question. I'm going to put on my former occupation hat with the law enforcement and security. So you're talking about 20,000 folks possibly will be coming around on an annual basis. That's over 1,000 roughly a month. With that, there's going to come in vandalism, auto burglary, theft, crowd control. What are the thoughts about hiring security or is that part of your staff of the five and how will that be controlled?
Yeah, good question. That was, we'd actually considered that as well, given the current situation at the corp yard and some of the issues that are faced down there now. That led us to the conclusion that we do need to fence the site to kind of protect it after hours. Whether we bring in security for after hours while staff's not there, I mean, if it's necessary, that's something we can look at. It's not part of the plans right now. The idea is during operating hours, there'll be enough activity to deflect and, you know, create a active area where people will not do those sorts of things, but it's going to be the after hours that are going to be hopefully not an issue. But if they are, then we'll have to figure out some sort of security or additional measures to protect it. But the idea is that no one's going to be able to come into the parking lot to congregate. We know that's a big issue for the neighbors across the street. They want to make sure that there's not going to be after hours inappropriate activities happening in the parking lot. So that's why we wanted to secure the site and keep it secure so nobody can get into there.
Okay, thank you. Maybe something, a conversation to be had with the PD, with the sheriff, some type of MOU or whatnot, but then that will be, remain to be seen later on in the future when we see what type of crowds are coming in. Any other questions or comments from the commission to the staff or the applicant? Okay, at this time I will open public comment. And first I have is Ms. Valerie or Ken?
Hello, everybody. I'm Valerie C. Zach Morris, President, CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much, commissioners, for having me here tonight. I just want to say this project here is a true gem for American Canyon. We could not see a better collaboration between a city and a nonprofit. Also, the repurposing of a building that would otherwise sit there and collect dust, going into an amazing learning center for American Canyon. So I'm extremely proud of what this project is going to bring, what it has to offer and what it stands for. Tourism, it screams it all over the place, right? We want somewhere in Napa County to bring our tourists, our children and people to learn about what is here. The name, Napa River Ecology Center, it couldn't speak more clearly for what it is, right? Here in American Canyon, but it's Napa. It brings tears to my eyes, you guys. This project is something we should be so proud of in the state of California. Nobody else has this. They're not doing this and we're not going to see it. It is a true collaboration of nonprofit, community, economics and repurposing what we once would just destroy. So I'm here to say as a Chamber of Commerce, as the president, CEO, as a fellow member of the American Canyon Community Parks Foundation, I am so proud of this project. I am so proud of what this is bringing forward and this is just a true reflection of how we are growing in American Canyon, how we are collaborating and how we are bringing together the things that we should be. So congratulations, American Canyon Community Parks Foundation, Janelle Selig. You guys have me emotional tonight and that doesn't happen very often, but I am so proud of what this is going to bring to our community. And thank you all. And I hope that the planning commission sees this as a true gem and approves the project tonight. So thank you very much and I appreciate standing up here and advocating for this project.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kenneth Leary, City of American Canyon. Yeah, I think the project is fantastic. I have a few questions regarding mitigation for climate adaptation, sea level rise, and is there going to be any plans to be able to mitigate that? And then also the surface, will that be permissible so water can drain out? I would hate to see this place flood and not be able to be used. So will there be any plans to mitigate that? Because climate adaptation, sea level rise will happen and this is a wetland. So, yes, so.
Jeremy, do you want to respond?
Sorry. I mean, you know, we respond, you go over to him.
No, no, you have to respond.
I know you got them all the time and you can answer them, but I'll be right there.
Good evening. Jeremy Sill with RSA Plus Civil Engineers out of Napa. This is an exciting project for us too. I mean, most projects I work on, you know, it's a field, it's something else and we're turning it into more impervious area. Then we have to figure out how to detain the water, how to treat the water, discharge the water. I mean, the site now is, you know, it's kind of compacted gravel. Doesn't get a lot of infiltration in this project. The surfaces we're using, we're using pervious surfaces to allow, to allow the water to drain through as much as possible. We're going to have a demo wetlands. We're adding wetlands to the site to show, showcase how that works. We're going to treat, if there is any, you know, roof runoff, we have the downspout collection and we're going to reuse the water. Plus, if there are other surfaces that aren't, we're going to treat them with bio retention basins. And then what we'll do in overall analysis, I mean, we haven't done it yet, but it's easy enough to do to show if there, you know, if there was any excess water, we'd definitely be detaining it. But I think we're going to be on the other side. We're going to be having less water that leaves the site after it's done, which is the opposite of what it normally is. Usually when you're taking a site and you're redoing it, you have to figure out how to store it and then release it. But this site is going to have surfaces that are not, that are not allowing water to pond. So, yeah, so we're doing, you know, doing a lot of services, a lot of different types of services. The parking lots, the play areas, the landscaping, it's taken the gravel, kind of compacted area and making it much more pervious, letting water to filter through.
Will there be any levees around the wetlands around the river?
So there's one, there's one there now, but we're not, I'm not proposing any levees at this point.
Do you want to?
Well, I'm not part of this.
Partnership, collaboration.
Good evening. Erica Almond Smithy, Public Works Director. Yes, and in addition to the Napa River Ecology Center, there's a bigger plan being worked on right now at the City of American Canyon, the Wetland Restoration Plan. One of the sites specifically being looked at for resiliency and it's, you know, inundation and the future, you know, sea level rise is the site and the trails around the site, which eventually work as a berm. And one of those plans is raising those trails or that are now trails, but also a working levy for the site. So that is one of the things we're looking at, that plan. I got a bird's eye view of that plan today, no pun intended on the title here, but we are looking at that and the cost for buffering the site and protecting it from the long range sea level rise. So that'll be debuting soon. The plan should be out soon to be shared with our technical advisory committee, which ACCPF, Janelle Selig is on that TAC committee before it gets brought to council. So it is being reviewed as part of a larger plan for the city community. Any questions on that?
Good evening, Barry Christian. I live in American Canyon. I'm going to read a letter for on behalf of Friends of the Napa River, the president Francie Winon. We talked her out of driving down here at night and possibly in the rain and who knows if there's a quorum, but I'm on their board anyway. So, Dear Planning Commission, Friends of the Napa River would like to provide this letter of support for the development of the Napa River Ecology Center project. We understand the American Canyon Parks and Community Foundation is seeking approval to repurpose this industrial site, the city's former corporation yard, into the Napa River Ecology Center. This center will provide a home for environmental education, watershed programs and conservation. Friends of the Napa River is dedicated to the health, conservation and restoration of the Napa River and its watersheds, as well as education and access to its shorelines. For over 25 years, Friends of the River has been actively pursuing living river concepts to the Napa River and its watershed. We believe that a resource such as the Napa River Ecology Center would be a vital addition to furthering this effort. With its perfect location adjacent to the wetlands, the Napa River Ecology Center would be a source of pride and education for our community. We support these efforts to expand knowledge and access through this unique project. We feel this ecology center will enhance our community's connection with the Napa River and its aquatic creatures. Its educational programs will ensure that the youth in Napa County gain significant knowledge about the river and watershed from this vital environmental entity. We applaud American Canyon's Community and Parks Foundation for this invaluable project. By making this vision a reality, American Canyon is showing the whole Bay Area its commitment to a healthy and thriving environment. Sincerely, Francie Winon, President, Friends of the Napa River. And just, I think I have a minute left. So following up on Commissioner Cruz's comments about security, I think the main problem is from the river. The corp yard got hit about 20 years ago, lost thousands of dollars worth of equipment. People will come from the river. My brother's friend down in Florida wrote, he's a fish game warden and he wrote a couple of books on his experiences. People on the rivers, they'll do all, they'll throw explosives in the water to kill fish so that they can just harvest it. It's like a lawless community and they'll go up and down the river. State Department of Fish and Game was hit out at their site at Green Island. And Chuck Bowling, who used to manage the landfill, told me about all the different problems they had people trespassing. So I don't know how to advise on protecting against that, but I think awareness of it is the important thing because they'll come in from the river at night and the citizens that live there won't see it. They won't know what's going on. It comes in from behind. So just my, sorry for the negativity, but that's it. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Barry. Any other public comments? Fran?
Okay. First of all, I think there's an elevator in that building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good, good. I need that. And also I wonder, I remember a long time ago, we had all those ponds. What happened to those ponds? Are they incorporated into? It's kind of a stupid question, but what happened to the ponds that used to be around there?
The old wastewater ponds were breached years ago.
Oh, they were.
So now they're part of the wetlands.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Thank you. And it's a wonderful project. And thank you, Janelle, for all of your thoughts and all your hard work and everybody else because this is a dream come true for the City of American Canyon. We're going to be known for our wetlands. So thank you.
Thank you. Leon Garcia speaking. He's a member of the public. Related to this, the California Coastal Commission has done some extensive displays on what they're doing with the San Pablo Bay wetlands area. Be beneficial to connect with that because it's very related to what we're attempting to do here. The North Bay Watershed Association is having their annual conference April 19. Generally pulls in a lot of the information like this. Their focus seems to be in the same areas that we have with regard to the ECO Center. So I just pass that along. Might be worthwhile to, for all of us to be aware of what's going on in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
My name is Jim Wilson. I'm from Napa. I'm a retired risk manager and lab manager. It's nice to be here today and it's good to hear those comments about the animals and safety and security and energy and to hear some of the encouraging answers. I'm here because I'm also inspired by this project. I've been watching it from afar and I do think it has broad implications for the wider community. And I tend to look at it from the climate point of view because I've been involved in some of the things that the countywide Climate Action Committee is doing. And this community is a vital part of that effort. And let me tell you, American Canyon can and does lead. And that's important for the broader worldwide perspective. I think I try to take my grandson's perspective on this. And that's why I want to back up for just a minute and read some very important whereas clauses from the American Canyon Climate Emergency Resolution, which was passed in February of 2022. And this is, this is just a part, if I may please. Whereas today's children represent a particularly vulnerable group because increasing greenhouse gases and trapped heat will almost certainly have a profound negative impact throughout their lives as well as the lives of future generations. We talk about sea level rise and we talk about exponentially increasing heat right now. It's triggering irreversible climate tipping points because we have earth systems that are tipping toward, you know, runaway heat. And that's just the way it is. Kids are aware of this in our schools and so we owe it to them. We resolve that a climate emergency exists and threatens our city and our state and county and the planet, that the City of American Canyon joins a growing list of communities committed to a goal of net zero climate pollution measured in terms of net contribution to excess trapped heat by or before 2030, and further commits to evaluate all planning and policy decisions through the lens of this pledge and to implement both immediate and sustained actions in support of its achievement. I think this is one because if you, if you take a look out this window and you survey your landscape, you ask yourself the question, you know, what is this thing doing? Is it a net emitter or is it a net sink? And so I like to propose that we preserve our landscapes as best as possible as net sinks. And that's what we do by reusing buildings. Finally, the city council recognizes the need of full community participation and support and commits to providing leadership and services in working with community organizations, businesses, schools, you're doing a good job of that, and regional partners and jurisdictions to educate, mobilize, expand and accelerate local and regional support for comprehensive, immediate and sustained action to achieve our collective goal of net zero climate pollution by or before 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, any other public comments? Any comments on Zoom?
Yes, we have a couple of people on Zoom. I am going to call Heidi Zepay first. Heidi, please unmute yourself.
Can you confirm that you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you so much. And thanks for the opportunity to make a comment on Zoom as I couldn't be in the room tonight. I am a resident of American Canyon and the Preserve Neighborhood specifically, which is directly east of this project area. And I just want to say, what a great project. This is so exciting, you guys. When we moved to American Canyon 20 years ago, we were like, what is happening with that building? And it's really a very interesting thing to see that our appreciation for the wetlands that we have today has changed so significantly, significantly from what it was when the city, I'm going to say made a mistake in the placement of the corp yard building, but it's come full circle and now it's going to have such a better life. The one thing in hearing everybody's comments, we're so proud of this center being built in American Canyon, but I noted, Janelle and Parks Foundation that you're calling at the Napa River Ecology Center. Is it going to say at American Canyon? Are we going to shout out American Canyon to make sure people know that this ecology center is not just Napa, right? Napa River at American Canyon. I hope that you're going to consider that. And Planning Commission, I hope that you can approve this resolution and get this project going. It has been a long time in the making and it deserves to happen for us as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Heidi.
Okay, next we have Victor Maribelli. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, Victor. Victor, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hello, my name is Victor Maribelli. I want to thank the council for this opportunity. I am with the carpenters union. We are excited for this project. It's a one of a kind and it's really something that this area really needs. I have one question and one comment. My question is, since this is part of the city or some of the city, is this going to be a prevailing wage project? And my comment is, if you use union generals or union subcontractors, they are all bonded. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to make public comment? There's no more Zoom comment.
Thank you for that. We will allow the applicant and staff to answer that question.
Hello, Janelle Selig again. Hi, Heidi. Thank you for your great question.
Thank you for your great question. Actually, a lot of thought has gone into the name of the project. Originally, we were calling it the Wetlands Ecology Center. You know, I'm at the wetlands probably six times a week or more and I couldn't help but notice that our trails in the parking lot, it is it is actually called the Napa River Trail. It is this part of the Napa River. We're at the south end of the Napa River, actually the widest, most accessible part of the river in Napa Valley. So it is a geographically accurate name and that's one of the reasons why we decided to move forward with that name. That being said, all of our marketing materials and everything will have that it is at the American Canyon Wetlands. So Napa River Ecology Center at the American Canyon Wetlands because yay, American Canyon and our wetlands are very special. So so great question. Thank you for asking.
I will respond to the question about prevailing wage. It is something we are aware about. We have been communicating with the city. We have not yet concluded our research, but it does appear that we will be doing prevailing wage, but we're still doing our due diligence on that facet.
Great, thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from Zoom?
No.
At this time, I close public comments. All right, Commissioners, well, you've heard everything. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, approving a design permit for redevelopment of an existing 5,000 square foot, two-story building into an ecology center at 205 Wetlands Edge Road in the Public P Zoning District, APN 058-040-018, file number PL23-0019.
I will second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff has. I'm sorry? Commissioner Goff has recused himself, Vice Chair Mohammed.
Aye.
And Chair Cruz.
Absolutely aye.
Step one down.
Bravo, ACC, bravo. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks. Thank you. I know you guys are all excited. We'll be continuing our public hearing. We do have another agenda on item, another item on agenda. Okay, next item for a public hearing, we have resolutions recommending two ordinances establishing industrial use sustainability standards in a grease greenhouse gas emissions. Staff.
Chair and commission members, this is being presented by the city attorney's office. I think what I'm going to say before I go into the staff report is I think we're in a position to integrate past experience and industrial development within the city and also knowing that still there is a lot of industrial development planned within the city. That's the reason why a exercise of the city in under its police power for the public health, safety and welfare is being advanced in the two ordinances before you tonight. And I'm going to make, you know, it is a technical exercise, so I'll go slowly and I'd say in my presentation, if you have questions, interrupt me. I have a method of presentation. It seems logical to me, but if there's a question that comes up that you think needs to be addressed, just say, could you please pause and explain this or relate this in another way? It's not your fault you can't understand what I say. So, okay, so what's the matter before you? You have two resolutions recommending to the city council that they adopt two ordinances. One deals with the area of SEQA and establishing thresholds with respect to greenhouse gases. The other one is actually an amendment to the municipal code establishing establishing what I will call is a parallel regulation with respect to greenhouse gases and specifically defined uses. All right. And as far as I know, there's only been one, there's one comment that came in before the deadline and I'll address that as part of my presentation. California has established a goal of carbon neutrality by 2045, California, right? In essence, the proposed ordinances for you that are before you tonight, we're standing in the shoes of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, a state agency that comes under the jurisdiction of the California Air Resources Board. I'll explain that further in the staff report. So that's the state goal. It's recognized that the city set up another goal, but I'll just cut to the quick and say by implementing these ordinances, that is recommending their adoption to the city council, we're actually establishing a greenhouse gas standard both as a substantive land use provision and as well as a SEQA procedure to review those that doesn't exist right now. So whether it's in our resolution, which is a statement of policy, or the statement goal to, you know, compress that to 2030, which is not on the agenda, what you're doing tonight sets up a substantive standard in both areas that implements greenhouse gas regulation associated with industrial uses. All right, let me let me proceed forward. Okay, industrial land uses like freight warehouse logistics centers emit substantial greenhouse gas emissions and present best and most efficient efficient opportunities to reduce and mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. Again, let me supplement the staff report. You know, what happens when you get a development that comes before you? Unless it's exempt from review under SEQA, and generally those are small projects, it has to have an environmental analysis in the the specific use based on its intensity and identified impacts under a matrix set forth in SEQA where there are standards of thresholds of categories in the 13 categories, you then proceed to environmental or staff proceeds then to analyze it environmentally. This is meant to address that specific area. All right. Are we going to be an environmental leader when we adopt this? The answer is yes. All right, why? Well, just cut to the quick. Nobody else in the county has done it. And again, we're filling in for something that either by air emission, lack of administrative agency resources, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District didn't address. We're filling in that hole. The Environmental Quality Act requires lead agencies to choose a threshold of significance to evaluate greenhouse gas emissions that are support that's supported by substantial evidence and captures all the significant impacts which may be developed. And we can do this and we can rely on another local agency if they've done it in their rulemaking capacity. The principal agency that we're relying on here are the standards that were formulated by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. I'll explain more about what they are in a minute. But again, we fall within the jurisdiction of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. In 2022, they did a greenhouse gas significant thresholds recommendation for residential and commercial projects, but did not recommend a threshold for industrial land uses. On the other hand, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, which is comprised of a portion of LA County, all of Orange County, and portions of San Bernardino and Riverside County, did go through a rulemaking proceeding, evidence based where they came up with standards of thresholds. Those again relate directly to land uses. We're combining or relying on those thresholds as well as other expert testimony, other expert evidence to formulate those recommendations in the environmental thresholds. We have to relate them to something, so we relate them to a specifically defined industrial, what I'm going to call collectively a warehouse use. So that's the logic. We're coming forward with a SEQA threshold that will trigger a specific type of environmental review associated with a now defined industrial land use in the municipal code. Those are the two ordinances. All right, what are they? The SEQA, the SEQA threshold standards are set forth on it's 104 of the packet. It's in the staff report and it starts logically like you would with any SEQA analysis. Are there categorical exemptions, right? Then they have the consistency with local greenhouse gas reduction plans. That's where we come in, right? Are we establishing that substantive plan? Yes, the second half of the ordinances goes to that. So, you know, the idea that 2030 is significant, it is for the city, but here what we're really doing again is formulating something that should have been done by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. If they come in and establish these thresholds, it will depend on whether or not these stay in place or not. You know, and I'll just say why? Why, Mr. Ross? Well, the reason is local agencies don't have the authority yet, in my view, to adopt stricter standards than those of the Air Quality Management District in which jurisdiction they fall. All right. Could an argument be advanced that those that these regulations should be maintained? Yes, but that's for something in the future. All right, so notice you go through these categories, right? And what happens when you get to tier four? Well, if it exceeds all these standards, which set up substantive provisions for mitigating greenhouse gases, then it has to be analyzed in an environmental impact report. And if you remember, the logic beyond in in contained in an environmental impact report is if you've got identified impacts on the physical environment, then there has to be a good faith effort to come up with additional mitigation measures, you know, and the goal there is to reduce it to a level of insignificance. So that tiered process right here are the environmental thresholds. It's basically those of the South Coast Air Quality Management District that they came up with when formulated that we propose that you adopt by ordinance, which you recommend by resolution. You recommend the adoption of that ordinance to the city council, right? Now, you need to look at, you know, it's on 105 of the packet, the staff presentation. The next part about implementing industrial commerce centers sustainability standards, that's the land use portion, all right? Please notice that it's applicable to projects for which notice of preparation would be applicable after March 1, 2024 of this year. These are both ordinances of the city, so they follow through the same provision that any ordinance would. There's going to be a second reading and it would become effective 30 days after the second reading. But what does that do? It formulates in a land use definition, excuse me, that's set forth in the ordinance, specific standards for zero emission operational equipment, all of the things that are headlined one through four on page 105. So it's the substantive provisions and then continues on on the next page through page seven. So it it sets those substantive standards in the ordinance for recommendation for adoption in the municipal code. This isn't a resolution that can be changed by whim. You're adopting ordinances. Again, ordinances for a SEQA review standard, ordinances that set industrial land use designations related specifically to greenhouse gas mitigation. All right, how is that implemented? The two ordinances are set forth as attachments. First one is the SEQA ordinance. Second one is the industrial standard. The third attachment, that's the resolution that would adopt the the SEQA standards, the first ordinance. The fourth, the fourth matter of the attachment is the resolution that would would adopt the substantive land use standards. So that's, that's the staff report in essence, right? I've gone, the the comment that was received was from Allison Benchik. And it basically says the following, I think you all have a comment about it. She says she's writing on behalf of the Napa Schools for Climate Action. We are concerned regarding American Canyon's industrial greenhouse gas resolution and ordinance, which appears to have overlooked our net zero 2030 target. Again, for the reasons stated earlier, we haven't overlooked it at all. We're taking substantive steps right now to establish the standard to achieve it with industrial land uses warehouses in the city. And it goes on to say what she did, how she worked with the school district and relates back to the climate emergency resolution. And that does establish the 2030 date. But again, that's for the city standard. So, you know, I appreciate and respect very much this. It's an accurate statement, but what we're what we're doing is something that actually is both a substantive environmental review standard and a substantive land house, land use standard related to industrial uses as defined in the respective ordinances. Again, the pairing is ordinance number one goes with the first resolution. Ordinance number two goes with the second resolution. That's the staff presentation. I noticed you didn't interrupt me. I guess I should say thank you, but I'm available for questions right now. I would remind the commission, this is a public hearing. So thank you.
Planning Commissioners, what are your questions to Attorney Ross?
Great, I'll see you later. Okay, this is a public hearing chair.
So at this time, I open public comment. And first on board, I have Yvonne Buggins. Thank you, Yvonne. Any other public comments?
Jim Wilson, Napa. It's good to be here on behalf of my grandson. Again, thank you for the staff report. It had a lot of interesting things to say, especially around objective design standards with respect to climate mitigation, and I greatly appreciate that effort. I do have questions relative to the 2030 limit and how that relates to AB 1279, which is the 2045 target signed into law by Governor Newsom in 2022. And that does, by the way, say achieve carbon neutrality as soon as possible, comma, or no later than 2045. And so I think in that regard also is consistent with American Canyon's target, our collective target, the county, 2030. Very briefly, I want to talk about the the draft climate action plan. And that was an outgrowth of the Climate Emergency Resolution put together by an ad hoc committee, the city council's ad hoc climate action committee. And there you see a number of these objective design standards. For instance, increase the number of solar installations. It's there. Eliminate use of natural gas and new developments. It's there. How about that? Just do it. Replace gas powered equipment with electric. It's there. Require EV chargers and new developments. Require EV chargers in new developments. All there. A couple of the ad hoc committee's recommendations were not there. They are require new development, require new development to include batteries. I might have missed it. I'm sorry if I did, but I don't see it. And I'd like to recommend that you include that. And to encourage the use of low carbon cement or concrete. That's out there. It's increasingly important that we recognize that concrete is a large emitter, and if we can reduce carbon intensity in the concrete, as recommended by the draft climate action plan, that also would be a position that really sets the lead for American Canyon and the region as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other public comments?
We do have somebody on Zoom. Frances Tenny, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Frances, please unmute yourself. Okay, I see that you're unmuted, and it looks like you're lighting up a little bit, indicating that you're talking, but we can't hear you. Okay, it seems like we might be having some technical difficulties. I really apologize, Frances. Try one more thing. Frances, can you try speaking again, please?
Yes, is this working?
There we go.
Great. Okay, thank you so much for troubleshooting that. So yes, I'm Frances Tenny, I'm an attorney with.
I'm sorry, Frances, unmute yourself again, I apologize.
No problem. Thank you for working on this. So I'm Frances Tenny, I'm an attorney with the Center for Biological Diversity, and thank you so much, Bill, for your presentation. I appreciate the city's efforts to address the climate crisis, and I'm just just wanted to comment to encourage the planning commission to support both of these ordinances. The UN and scientists worldwide have warned that we need serious, immediate, and sustained cuts to greenhouse gas emissions across all parts of society to avoid the worst impacts of the climate crisis. So to do their part, California cities have to fully understand the climate impacts of their land use decisions and minimize those impacts as much as possible. The Center for Biological Diversity works statewide to promote protective science-backed standards so that local leaders can properly understand the climate impacts of the land use projects brought before them. And there's a real need to adopt these two measures here today. As as Bill was saying, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District hasn't provided a threshold of general applicability to explain how to fully measure and analyze GHG impacts from industrial development, which leaves cities and counties in the Bay Area to use a patchwork of different, sometimes legally inadequate methods on a project-by-project basis. By adopting the ordinance on industrial use greenhouse gas standards, American Canyon is demonstrating leadership in the region, the first Bay Area municipality to address this regulatory gap by adopting an evidence-backed standardized method that builds on Backman's work and ensures that GHG emissions from industrial projects will be fully analyzed. Once the GHG impacts are accurately assessed and understood, the next step is to mitigate them and the air quality impacts that go along with them. The ordinance on industrial sustainability standards does that by requiring zero emission onsite equipment, rooftop solar sufficient to meet 100% of the building's power needs, more electric vehicle charging stations than required by state law, and state-of-the-art air filtration systems. Adopting these policies is in line with the California Attorney General's recommended best practices for industrial development, and will protect the city's residents from the health consequences of air pollution, will carefully steward American Canyon's national natural resources, and will accelerate American Canyon's transition to a carbon-free future. I applaud the city for its work on these ordinances, and I urge the planning commission to recommend adopting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances. Any other calls on Zoom?
We don't have anyone else on Zoom.
At this time, I close public comment. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Bear with me for a moment here. Okay, I will make a, where the heck is it? And I think I can give you some page numbers. The resolution in packet page 114 to 117 is the resolution that adopts the SEQA standards for implementing greenhouse gas standards. That's ordinance number one, which is contained on packet page 108 through 109. So that would be the first resolution. Got it. So I will make a motion that the planning commission adopt, excuse me, not adopt, but recommend and for adoption, an ordinance of the city council, the City of American Canyon, adopting greenhouse gas standards. Ordinance, ordinance number 2024 dash next.
I'll second.
It has been regularly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mohammed.
Aye.
Chair Cruz.
Aye.
And Commissioner Malari is absent.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, and moving on to management and staff oral, oh, no. One more, sorry. I jumped the gun.
Resolution for the second ordinance, so it's the resolution on packet page 117, and it's a law, it goes for ten-four pages, to 120. And it's related to the ordinance with respect to industrial commerce centers sustainability standards, which is on packet page 110 through 112. So next would be if someone could move approval of resolution number 2024 next in order. It's the one, then, if you look at the third line, that deals with industrial commerce centers sustainability standards. I believe it's on page 117.
Chair, if I could ask a question for City Attorney Ross, and this really has to do with the comments made by Mr. Wilson. I understand that most of the research and data going into this resolution came from the, I forgot, it's south, whatever. Was there any mention about low carbon cement in any of their findings?
I think there, you know, what I'm going to say is, I think it's included with that, the standards that are referenced, if you will, on page 118 through 119, which would be amendments to the zoning code, the zoning code of the city. Do I know this specific reference? I do not. I believe it's related to the Title III and Title IV standards, one of federal regulations and the other of California Code of Regulations that deal with how power sources are integrated with the building. I don't know the answer to that question based on the content of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I would say this. If you look at, they are so comprehensive because of the integration of both regulation of how industrial warehouses are regulated, and they are related consistently to zero emission standards. I think that standard in and of itself is going to ensure compliance with the concrete standard reference. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
So, and that would be in section, again, it's not a, it's not a resolution, that's going to be in chapter 19.41.020 of the municipal code. So it's a law, it's not just a resolution with policies taken.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I will make a motion that the planning commission recommend adoption of an ordinance to the city council to implement industrial commerce centers sustainability standards. Ordinance number 2024 dash next in order. Yeah, yes. I move to approve a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to implement industrial commerce centers sustainability standards. Ordinance number 2024, next in order.
I second.
It has been regularly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mohammed.
Aye.
Chair Cruz. And Commissioner Malari is absent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Ross and everybody involved. Moving on to management and staff oral reports. Director Cooper.
All right, thank you, Chair Cruz and Planning Commission and members of the public. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, we do a monthly update on projects that the Community Development Department is working on. There is attached to the agenda packet is a list of all of the projects. I'll just give a brief update on some of the more recent changes from last month. The first one is we have an application for 100 townhome apartment units at Crawford Way, and I think today we finally got the resubmital. So we've been waiting seven months for that, and we've been checking in with the applicant. So it's nice to see that one move forward. All the way down to construction, PG&E has a regional center up at by the Napa Airport, and they're very getting close to nearing completion. William was just out there, I think, at the end of last week, checking it out. So it's nice to see that big project nearly finished.
Do they have their monopole up yet?
No, it's not up yet, but that was something that came to the planning commission. At our next meeting in February, we're planning to bring an underground condition reconsideration for chicken guide to the planning commission. And as well, we have a bundle of code amendments to implement the housing element. So if you might recall, it was almost a year ago that this council approved the housing element, and it was certified by the state at the end of May. And included in the housing element is a commitment to affirmatively affirm fair housing. And there are a number of things that the city can do to accomplish that. Cities intentionally or unintentionally, through zoning power, has caused for inequities and institutionalized racism and disparities. And so these changes are intended to remove barriers to housing for a broader segment of our society. And I'll talk more about it at our next meeting. But we have quite a few changes. Some are small, some are larger. We have the accessory dwelling unit ordinance update and density bonus. Those are two larger ones, but there's a bundle of other changes that we can do to affirmatively affirm fair housing in American Canyon.
I guess affirmatively affirming meets negatively affirming?
Well, many cities apparently over many years have said, oh, yes, we'll do it, but then don't. And so the the state of the art on the conversation is, no, you need to actually affirmatively do it. So it's it's a higher level, and it's showing that you show us how you really are doing it and not just platitudes. So so that's kind of what that's what's all about. I know it's a kind of a wordy term, but it brings home the message that that cities need to do more. American Canyon is really an exception in California. I'm sure at HCD, they have our picture there, you know, under the under the thing, but but there's always something more that we can do to further the further the issue. We also are working on an annexation of 80 acres, Paoli Loop and Watson Lane. The next threshold milestone for that is a hearing with the Airport Land Use Commission, and it looks like we have a date tentatively set for a hearing with that commission on March 20. So we're looking forward to that. The Airport Land Use Commission evaluates the city's plan with respect to the Napa County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, so that's the two plans kind of meshed together in a mashup and let us know how we did. So another big change, kind of timely with today, of course, would be the Regional Working Group for Climate Change that's countywide. There is a draft, a building code update that's been presented to all the jurisdictions in Napa County that would further greenhouse gas emission reduction standards and other sustainability measures in our building code countywide. And so that just came down as a draft a couple days ago, and there's a meeting tomorrow. So I'll have an update for you on that. But I expect that we'll be bringing that to the planning commission and city council this spring. And then part of our annual reporting that we always look forward to is our annual housing element report. This is reporting on how the cities accomplished housing element policies in the last year, as well as an update on the general plan overall. We did one last year for the first time, and so we'll be building on that again, and we'll be bringing that to you in your March, is it March planning commission meeting? It's going to the council in April, so we make sure we get it done on time. It's like it's like income taxes they do in April. We send them off to the state when they're accomplished. So that's my update for you. If you have any questions on everything else on the list, let me know.
Great, thank you, Director Cooper, for those updates. Moving on to commissioner items, any items of the commissioners? Guess not? Okay, it's about that time. The time is 8:20, meeting adjourned.